How you doing tonight, Mike? Can't hear you. Can't hear you. Mike, I'm mouthing the words, saying, "I can't hear you," thinking that you can't hear me either, but maybe you can hear me.
No, I can, I can hear you.
Oh, now I can hear you.
Ah, there you go. I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I went to my time-tested trick of unplugging it and then plugging it back in, and it worked.
Excellent.
Yeah. Call me for tech support anytime.
I'll be able to get it anyway, so.
I can also recommend that you restart it.
Yeah, exactly.
Start video. There we go. That worked.
There is Gus.
You guys were on, and then I couldn't find, uh, no, what's weird here is I'm gonna move you on to where I where you belong. There we go. I could see you guys, but I wasn't connected at first, but then I was.
So you had to wait for me to promote you to be on the panel.
Okay. That works.
And Mark, you're there?
I'm here.
I unmuted you.
Thank you. I know how to mute myself.
No comment.
Well, before, before we officially start, Scott, I meant to send you an email to convey how much more soundly I slept last night, knowing that the democratic processes of Medfield are in good hands for another year. Congratulations.
Thank you. To you too. To you too. Yeah.
Can you believe I fooled that many people?
Well, I will tell you, Gus, got Scott slept well, knowing that he got more votes than you, so he's.
Yes, he did. You know, you know.
I just like to think of it as less blanks.
I thought about that, and I had two thoughts. Number one is that, as we all know, Scott is such a much nicer guy than I am. So it's understandable in that sense, but the other side of it is, I'm glad to see there's some people paying attention. You know, if it was just all river stamp, who would just tell you nobody was caring?
How many people voted?
About 600.
600.
Really?
Well, 480 by absentee ballot, right? Only 120.
Something like that, yeah. Yep. I can actually change my other glasses now here, because that works better. There we go. Uh, let's see, our, uh, before, again, one more point before we officially start. I want to make sure I get this right. I believe it's the outgoing chairman that makes the motions for reorganizing, reorganizing the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct? Mike, I, it seemed to me you jumped right on it last year, but I couldn't remember.
That is the person with the greatest incentive to do so, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I assume, I assume I can accomplish, I can accomplish two motions with one motion in terms of getting myself promoted to number three selectman, right?
Yes, it's, it's called motivated motioning.
I just don't want to screw this one up. That's all. That's kind of. Uh, are we ready to get started?
I think you are ready to go.
Okay. Well, very good. Well, welcome to the Sanco de Mayo version of the Medfield Board of Selectmen's meeting for 2020. Somebody have a. And, oh, that's background. Okay. This meeting is being recorded pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limit limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice that was posted on the town's website. And again, uh, because this is a remote participation meeting, the remote participation rules apply. So roll call votes will require, will be required for each action that we take. Again, as we normally do at the start of each one of our meetings, I'd like to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the world, uh, in defense of our country. Thank you. And, and, uh, over the last several meetings, just in light of everything that's been going on, I've tried to, it, it recognize different groups of people that, uh, in one way or another are helping this town, uh, work its way or navigate its way through this crisis. In the last meeting that I will be starting, I want to make a comment, I want to recognize the young adults in this town. Uh, I took a drive around town this afternoon, just to, it was a nice day, just to see what was going on. And there were, there were young students that were at the hospital, on the hospital campus, at Wheelock, um, at the high school, walking down the streets. There were like three or four of them sitting on the roof of the shed over by the baseball field over near the middle school. I can tell you with a pretty good degree of sincerity that had this kind of a situation occurred in my life when I was their age, I have zero confidence that I would have behaved as maturely and as thoughtfully, um, while still being kids. Uh, I, I don't think I would have handled the situation as well as they have, and I, I just want to send out a compliment, uh, to at least the vast majority of our young adults in this town for the way they've conducted themselves throughout this whole process, and, and in fact, more generally, how they conduct themselves, just in who they are, not just now, but in, in general. We have, we have a very good resource here in town in our young people, and I would like to acknowledge that, uh, in this last meeting that I'll be running. Okay. First order of business is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. And I, as the outgoing chair of the Board of Selectmen, would like to make a motion that we elect Selectman Peterson as the new chair of the Board of Selectmen and Selectman Marcucci as the clerk of the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a second?
Can I second part of that? No, I, I will second that motion. I'd like to amend it to make Gus the clerk, if possible, but no.
Hearing no second, I think the motion stands as stated.
Mr. Murby.
Yeah.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
Then me, I'll, I'll defer. Okay.
And I, I pass the virtual gavel over to Pete to continue on with this meeting.
And for the record, I've moved your faces around on the screen to show that you're reorganized at the table.
Didn't change on my screen.
Does that mean Pete's at the top or at the bottom of the screen?
All right. So first act of business then is to, uh, hear from the moderator. Welcome, Scott. Thanks for coming.
Pleasure. Thank you.
It says that you want to talk about the 2020 annual town meeting. Are we gonna have one?
Yes, we will have one. So the question is, uh, when and where and what will we consider? I don't have a prepared script, because a lot of this has been discussions that I think all the folks that are kind of visible on the screen have been participating in, in one degree or another. So as you know, the current statuses are, we postponed our meeting from last evening, would have been last night, uh, the first time we would have been having our town meeting in the month of May, uh, and it, over to June 15th. And so that's kind of the status of where we are now, uh, provided us the visibility to, to see where we would be relative to, you know, the current circumstances. And, uh, so we have a little bit more visibility, but we don't, we don't have a lot, uh, in terms of, you know, where we will be, uh, about six weeks from now, from tonight. So Christine has put together, I don't know whether you've had an opportunity to circulate, some of the various scenarios for what we, what we might do. So as I said, the question would be when? The, the, it would be June 15th is the date that we've designated at, at this point in time. As you know, there has been special legislation to allow, uh, town meetings to be, uh, postponed again, and, uh, some towns are, are, have already made the decision that they will postpone till the fall, and they will elect to go forward under the option of using the, kind of the 1/12th, uh, budget allocation and go on a month-to-month budget going forward. So that's being considered as a, as an option. The legislature is considering an act, which I guess we expect Christine to be passed in the next couple of days, that would make a series of other provisions, including, uh, a provision that would allow the Board of Selectmen to vote to reduce the forum, uh, excuse me, the quorum, uh, down to as, uh, as much as one-tenth of the existing quorum. So we all know that our, our quorum is 250 residents, voters. So that is in play. They make, they've made a number of special accommodations for representative town meetings, having to do with perhaps, uh, if they can work out the details, the opportunity to be able to conduct town meetings using some kind of an, uh, an online vehicle like we're on now. That is not an option that would be available to, uh, open town meetings. And, uh, Mark, you're on the phone, so please chime in. You and I have been talking about this, and I know that, uh, you've been looking at this from a, a number of different angles as well. So, so one option has to do, one thing that we would, we would need to, to consider is the when of the town meeting. The when is bounded a little bit by obligations, uh, to have a warrant hearing no less than 30 days prior to the annual town meeting. So that's one of the stakes in the ground that we would need to consider as a, as a function of our, uh, town charter. And, uh, and also, uh, we do mail the warrant, we're required to mail the warrant, uh, to our residents, um, no later than seven days prior to the annual town meeting. So those are kinds of, uh, are stakes in the ground that, that, you know, we're gonna have to consider as we think about, uh, the when of the town meeting. The where of the town meeting, you know, except for one exception, when we did go to the auditorium, uh, you know, we have gone year over year to the high school gym. The high school gym in June is, uh, you know, is an air-conditioned facility. That's not considered necessarily to be a good thing, actually, in the, in the eyes of some of the people that I'm talking to, because of the recirculation of air. Plus, it also provides only a limited capability to be able to separate people and do the kind of physical distancing that, uh, you know, we would want to maintain and that, uh, that everybody would like us to maintain. So that would provide us with the opportunity to be able to go outside, and I think that's the best, uh, provision that we could make. We could go, uh, to the, to, uh, the parking lot, uh, at the high school, we could go to Mete Comet Field, uh, we could go to our turf field. There are advantages and disadvantages of, of all of those options. If we were to choose one of those options, you know, some of it would have to do with our, our production capabilities to be able to provide the sound and also to be able to set up, uh, in cooperation with Medfield TV, the opportunity to be able to, to present the town meeting over cable to the rest of the town. If we were to reduce, uh, elect the option to be able to reduce our quorum, uh, you know, it's very, would be very difficult to even to think about an arrangement where we would be able to set, set aside the required physical distancing in order to attract a quorum of 250 people. But beyond that, uh, you know, in light of what we saw with the, the, the understandable reluctance of people to come out in person to vote, I think there would be substantial reluctance, uh, even, uh, six weeks from now, for people to come together to be able to, uh, to convene as a, as a town in the conventional town meeting, uh, kind of a format. And in fact, um, you know, I've been talking to a number of other moderators, and a number of them are, are deferring, uh, their role in that decision, uh, because they are not experts in issues associated with the health elements of that, and they don't want to make the determination about, uh, the when and the where. They don't think it's appropriate for a moderator who is not expert in some of the health implications of, of doing it. But Christine and I've talked a little bit about advisories that we're getting from the, from the governor's office, and also that we would get locally from our Board of Health about what is appropriate, most importantly, what is safe, uh, for the town to do. So that'll be a consideration when it comes to the, the issue of the quorum, and when it comes to the issue of where the, the, the town meeting would be held. Christine, maybe what I, what would ask you to do is, uh, to just to, to speak to the s, the scenarios that, you know, that you've been speaking to, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen. Hello, Mike Pastore, I know that you've, uh, Christine has had an opportunity to share some of this thinking with you. And, uh, you know, there's, there's nothing prescriptive from the role of the moderator around, uh, the, these, uh, decisions, nor is there any precedent to, to rely on. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of precedent that we have around town meetings that go all the way back to 1651, uh, but not, not that addressed the crazy, uncertain issues that we're facing today. So I would expect that whatever decisions we would be making, you know, we would be making, uh, you know, in, in consensus, and, uh, and ultimately, I think when it comes to the, the issue of the location and the date, that's gonna be a selectmen's decision. I guess I have the opportunity to be able to continue to, to postpone it if we decided to, uh, to go forward into the fall. Is that, Mark Sorrell, do you want to check in in terms of what you're, you know, your, hearing and what your, what other considerations besides what I've been voicing would be, uh, you know, we should be considering here as a group?
Well, the legislation, uh, and I'll just deal with it procedurally. Once the town meeting date has been set, the legislature has, in chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, uh, given additional authority to the moderator to extend the town meeting for 30-day increments, uh, as long as the emergency, uh, conditions, the governor's emergency is declared emergency is in effect. So I, I don't know how towns are already jumping to the fall, frankly. The legislation, taken on its face, the only flexibility they provided is that you can, you can keep continuing it, you, you no longer have to have it by June 30th, which is the existing statute. Unfortunately, they made it an all-or-nothing proposition. Myself and other municipal attorneys who vetted the legislation while it was pending, did suggest that they try to, uh, uh, break out the budget as a separate item and allow that to be treated separately and not be tied into, uh, annual town meetings as far as the rest of, uh, articles, but, uh, we were unsuccessful, so it's an all-or-nothing proposition as far as having your annual town meeting and the budget article as part of that. So, uh, that's kind of as much as, as I have. If anyone has any questions, I do have a copy of the legislation here with me.
I, I would only add, Mark, that if the, if the decision is made to reduce the quorum, doesn't the legislation limit the consideration at the town meeting to just simply budget articles? I don't have that provision of the legislation of.
That actually hasn't passed yet.
You're right, but that's, that's part of what the legislation's being considered.
You, you have no idea, just because it's pending, whatever it says, because it can be last-minute additions, deletions, whatever, so it's very much a work in progress until you actually get both houses to pass something and the governor to sign it, and only then. I mean, even, even the Act, uh, 53 of, of 2020, uh, it wasn't till it finally came out, there, there was tweaks up to the last minute, so, uh, you know, there's really not that much to rely on right now. I mean, there are some towns right now that have no quorums for their town meeting anyway. The, that's the way the charter happens to be. It's all over the place. Medway has a, a hundred for annual and, and 50 for specials, unless it's zoning, which is also 100. But there are towns that, that have dropped their quorum requirements down to zero. So it's not that, it may be dramatic for Medfield, uh, but in my opinion, from anecdotal evidence, we have one of the higher quorums to begin with.
We, we do in fact have one of the higher quorums. I was on the phone today with the town moderator from Westford, and they have a, they have a, a zero quorum. So it's just that there are different approaches to, to the issue of quorum and to what, you know, to, to, uh, we have adopted, and I don't know, this has been a part of a charter for as long as I've been the moderator and, and beyond, that our quorum has been 250 persons.
Mark, Mark, could I ask you just to clarify something? I, I wasn't listening closely enough. You, you made a comment about you weren't sure how other towns, if I heard you right, how other towns have pushed their meeting off to the fall, and I realized I wasn't listening to what you said closely enough before that. Did, were you saying that towns don't have the authority to do that? That only a moderator can keep extending it out that way?
Yes.
Although some towns have gotten special legislation, have filed special legislation to be able to do their meeting in the fall.
So what I don't understand on that is the selectmen have the authority, unless I'm missing this part, the selectmen have the authority to approve or can, effectively, it's a continuing resolution authority to take not less than 1/12th of last year's budget and approve it to work our way through the coming months into the next fiscal year? But you're saying that that authority to pass that budget, that continuing budget resolution, doesn't come with the authority to push the town meeting itself out?
Well, actually, the legislation has flipped to that. It basically says, if you've been unable to hold a town meeting and pass a budget within the time periods provided, then in consultation with the Director of Accounts, you can then go to the 1/12th, which is, which is a provision that city governments already have anyway. So.
So talking practically here, if we just sit there and tell the state that we are unable to hold a town meeting until the fall, I mean, it, it's kind of, it's kind of the specifics.
I think you need to go through the motions and listen until the legislature revises this process further. What they've given you is that the moderator continues the matter at 30-day increments as long as the governor's emergency proclamation, proclamation or emergency order is in effect. So I think you have to stick, stick with that, and, and there'd be a record filed with the town clerk to the effect that you've done that, and I assume frankly, that, that the Director of Accounts is gonna want to see that, uh, paperwork as well, because they tend to be pretty, uh, nitpicky, if you will, as far as, uh, dotting i's and crossing t's. So that, that's what the legislation says. Although it's. It doesn't, it doesn't say anything about putting off annual town meetings to the fall or whatever. If the governor rescinded his order, uh, you know, not that it's going to happen, but if he were to do it within the next few weeks, you would then be in a position where, under the legislation, you would have to have your annual town meeting, at least by law, within a 30-day period, and it falls somewhere over the summer.
Unless you, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but the Board of Selectmen can ask the delegation to file legislation on their behalf to move the town meeting to the fall.
Oh, you can get it, you can get special legislation for anything, but you've got to get it through.
So what, but, but Mark, here, here's the, here's the issue. Right now, if we look at scenario one that Christine's laid out, we have a week and a half before we have a warrant hearing date for a town meeting that would take place on the 15th of June, which may or may not make sense, depending on what the three of us think, for sure. And what you're telling us is, but maybe the legislature hasn't given us the authority to push it out, but maybe we could put, and I'm not, I'm not slamming you, Mark, I'm probably slamming the legislature, I guess, but maybe the state would approve doing what we want to do, but maybe we wouldn't, which, which basically says, in a week and a half's time, we're, we're at a fork in the road, where either we're making an assumption on faith that this is gonna turn out to be what it kind of makes sense it should turn out to be, or we can't consider that as a viable alternative. What am I missing here?
Um, I, I'm not sure you're not reading, frankly, reading too much into it. The, the, the scheduling of the date of the annual town meeting, to some degree, under certain scenarios, would just be a formality to keep it, because that's what the legislation requires, that you ultimately, they don't say dispense with the annual town meeting, they just say, you, you put it off during the emergency. And again, if the emergency continues indefinitely, it's not really an issue, you just have these increments. But my concern would be that, that with all the pressure and all, that, that the emergency is, is, is rescinded, forcing you to do things within the time period. As far as the, that's a minimum date for having the, uh, the warrant hearing. So once you're in a position financially to proceed with that, you can, you can have that, get it done, and then that's, that's taken care of, and then whatever the, whenever you hold the meeting, you hold the meeting.
Well, but. Well, Mark, but, but, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the authority under which we postponed the town meeting till June 15th, we still have that authority, correct?
That's separate authority. You could have gone as far as June 30th. That was in place well before that. That was.
And, and we still, and we still have that authority.
Yes.
We could extend it from, from, from June 15th up to June 30th, under existing authority.
That's correct.
And so I, I think the, the first thing for us to think about is, do we want to try to have a town meeting before June 30th? Because it seems like we can have a town meeting before June 30th and meet both the statutory and practical deadlines for doing so. I think, as I've said, every time this has come up, my view is, whatever town meeting we have in June should deal with as few issues as possible, uh, to get us in a position to be open for business next year, and then potentially have a special town meeting to deal with the rest of them. It sounds like if the legislation passes, and I, I take your caution, Mark, that it hasn't passed yet, that we may have the authority under the new legislation to conduct such a town meeting with a lower quorum in June. And the advantage, obviously, of doing it in June is that it's by far the best month to conduct such a meeting outside, because not only is the weather nice, you have daylight until 8:15 or so, um, you could conduct a town meeting almost any day in June, and as long as you're not dealing with a huge number of issues, do it in an expeditious fashion. So I think that's the first thing we have to decide. Do we want to try to have a town meeting in June? And then if the answer is no, we don't want to have a town meeting in June, how do we fix it? In other words, do we, does the Board of Selectmen recommend to Scott that he exercise his authority on a rolling 30-day basis to postpone the town meeting or, or do something else? So I would pose that question.
That's correct. I think what you just said is exactly how you would proceed.
Right. So Gus and Pete, do you have a view on, my view is, I would like to have a town meeting in June that just deals with the budget. That is my preference in to conduct it outside.
And I think, I think my view is that I would rather see us do a meeting in the fall, uh, when we have a clearer idea of what that budget should be, uh, and, and to the extent that there's any other articles that get jammed into June, particularly if it's under a lower quorum, which I, I disagree with that philosophically anyway, but if it's under a lower quorum than any other, uh, spending articles, I don't think should be passed under a lower quorum.
And it sounds like under the legislation that you won't be able to. It would just be a budget.
This is from the Mass Municipal Association's website today, that, that, that the House had previously passed the legislation, the Senate today passed, and what it says for all but town meetings is that the bill will, would allow, uh, select boards in consultation with town moderators to. uh, select boards in consultation with town moderators to lower quorum requirements for open town meetings to not less than ten percent of the existing quorum level. These lower quorum town meetings would only be able to act on warrant articles approved by the select board, limited to the town's budget and acting on federal deadlines. And so and then it goes on to say that they expect that this legislation will be finalized in the, you know, in the days ahead. So whether that's true, subject to what Mark said, things always change in those days ahead or often do so. But that is, that's kind of the the most current information that's that I can find on the on the web.
So one of the things.
What you just said was not less than ten percent, so you could drop the quorum something less than it is now, but not as dramatic as ten percent either, you know. It seems like you you would have that discretion.
So one of the things that I've been thinking about in terms of quorum, because I I agree with Gus, that I was concerned that we're making financial decisions with a much smaller quorum than we're we normally allow. And I was thinking it is, okay, it's ten percent. I can't believe we're going to have a town meeting with just twenty-five people making that decision. And then after talking to Scott and talking to Mike, I changed my thinking that I want to be able to have a town meeting, and I want to be able to do with it as many as people as possible. But I don't want to have two hundred and forty people come out to a town meeting, and then it's not valid because we didn't have that two fifty. So I think even though we're we're reducing the quorum, it's just to ensure that we have as many people there as possible that feel comfortable coming to the town meeting. So I kind of changed my my thinking about the quorum in the last few hours.
Christine, I I would buy that if we are restricting the town meeting to the budget and the budget is some kind of continuation of our past budget. I don't, I I I'm open to what that actually means, but what I'm getting at is if if the budget that we're reviewing with a reduced quorum on an accelerated, I I had a point in time when we really don't know what our financial status for the year is. That budget was a conservatively structured budget that was more or less a steady-as-she-go's budget from the past, so it's in essence, it's using the town meeting to approve a continuing resolution with whatever modified adjustments we might want to make to it. Then I I'm okay with, you know, I can I can see getting on board with that. Uh, but in that case, I would say, hey, make the make the quorum ten percent. Because this is almost an administrative town meeting. If more people than ten percent of a quorum show up, so much the better, but there's no reason to try to second guess how many are willing to show up out and outside or even inside for to pass what is effectively a, I'll call it a mechanical budget. Uh, and then we deal with everything else in the fall. I I can be, I can do that. I I don't exactly know what advantage it gives us. Um, then let me, let me tell you where, I I'm not arguing against it. I can do that. That's fine. Um, the only question I had is as an as a practical alternative, if we went with the fall budget, recognizing the moderator has the authority to extend the date by thirty days at a time from whenever we schedule it. Uh, and this is assuming a concurrence on your part, Scott, with this whole picture. If we were to talk about having a town meeting, in my head, I picked late September or early October is the reasonable town time to have a real town meeting. That would require, if if we don't have the authority to just do that, that would require the town moderator, if I understood what Mark said properly, it would require the town moderator to extend the date for the town meeting thirty days at a time between, as it stands now, the fifteenth of July until such time in September or October as we target a date. Uh, but only do it thirty days at a time unless the emergency is lifted before then, in which case we have thirty days to pull up. Is that right?
Yeah, you still also, you'll you'll have to be dealing with the the director of accounts, because obviously, July one is a new fiscal year. You won't have a budget in place under that scenario. So you'll you'll need to get that authority uh, to implement the one twelfth.
In in June somewhere.
Or whatever the timetable is, so it's effective as of July first.
Well, we're waiting for, we're waiting for the the guidance to come from DOR about how you're going to be responsible every month for submitting a one twelfth budget. So we're still waiting for that. We anticipated having it earlier this week.
In fact, it's a one, it's a, it's not less than a one twelfth budget, so if the if the financial requirements of the town were greater than that, we would submit, presumably, if you could back up why you need to come up with more than a twelfth, you you'd have to explain it, but if it was reasonable, you could get approval.
Correct. So I did check in uh, with Representative Garlic uh, tonight and Senator Feeney last week about the budget. Um, Representative Garlic has asked to come to your meeting next Tuesday to discuss what she's calling her very grim outlook. Um, I believe most towns have been hearing in the last couple of days from their legislators about it. What we've been doing with the warrant committee, um, and we're still in the process, is developing and balancing our pre-COVID budget. As you know, we had a deficit before this happened. We've been working on balancing that budget, then determining what should be the reduction we're looking at in local receipts and local aid and figure out where we are from that point. Um, the school committee is coming into the warrant committee next week to present their budget cuts, and we should be able to get to our pre-COVID balanced budget shortly thereafter. Um, we are anticipating a ten percent reduction in local aid. That's what we've been talking about internally on the financial team. After my discussion with Denise tonight, I think it might be greater than that. Um, but she would like to have the chance to come in and present that to us.
Pete, I boxed you out. If you had, I apologize if you were going to say something, I didn't give you.
No, not a problem. I mean, for me, the the preferred choice of the town meeting scenario is the one that we're not permitted to do, which is the virtual town meeting. Uh, the legislature hasn't authorized that. Uh, I've had plenty of people tell me that they they prefer our Zoom selectman meetings to our prior versions. So I think that the the future is going to be in electronic meetings. Um, and that it's just much easier for people to attend and participate. And that's one of the scenarios that you put out there, Chris, but since it's an illegal medium, we can't really use that.
Correct.
I I don't think that we're going to have enough clarity as to whether things are going to be okay by the end of June, so I think we have to be ready to to move beyond June. I mean, we could certainly schedule something for June twenty-nine and 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 on a tentative basis, if it's not too much of a problem, but with the expectation that if things haven't changed, that we we really can't go forward with it then, and then just do the sequential thirty day continuances until the fall.
I guess from my my perspective, um, I'm probably more sanguine about the prospect of safely being able to hold um, a minimal outdoor town meeting in June than I am about the prospect of having a quote unquote real town meeting in September or October. I think if we're going to be taking decisions on the assumption that five hundred people are going to pile into um, the gym on September thirtieth, I I think that's a not a great bet. Um, and I think at that point in September, it's harder. It'll be harder to do it outside, not impossible, but harder. Um, and the advantage of kind of at least having, again, if the legislation passes, at least having town meeting approval of a budget, so that we're not, he had a minimum of one quarter of the year of a budget just being approved by the selectmen and potentially more, because if we decide, well, we're going to take the thirty day increment, and then you get to September, and either there's a renewed limitation on meetings or or just frankly, there's just renewed concern, because as the evidence is coming out, people were kind of locking themselves down before there was any government orders. If you look at people's activity, people were already stopping doing things. Um, and even in places where the rules are different, the behavior is the same. And so I I think even apart from whatever the rules are coming that will be issued are, people will be worried about coming out. People who are vulnerable will worry about coming out, and so I think thinking that we're going to have either, Pete, a change to a virtual town meeting by September or a quote unquote real town meeting by September, I I don't like that bet. And I think I would rather just do a provisional partial narrow town meeting to get us to the next step in June um, rather than expecting we'll be able to come together like everything is is normal in September. I mean, frankly, you you might be more likely to get there in January than.
And I don't disagree with that, Mike. I'm not, I'm not totally sanguine about the fact that we'll be able to do it in in June, and if we can't, we can't. But if we can.
I think that's fair.
So so just to be uh, clear, I I, if you're right about your projection, Mike, I think this country's in a whole lot more trouble than the issue of whether or not Medfield holds its annual town meeting in September. If we're if we're still doing this in September, I actually question whatever dire projections we have for financials and support from the state right now. By September, they'll be worse, but.
Well, maybe we may not be doing this, but we may also not be gathering five hundred people in a gym. There's, there's, it's not.
At any rate.
Whole degree of differences there.
So to be clear, if we were to push ahead with the June, I just want to make sure I understand what Christine, what you said around what the legislation says. I I think we have a, I think we've all, one way or the other, maybe with varying degrees of enthusiasm, stated that we are okay with a June town meeting that's restricted. Sorry. We are okay with the June town meeting that's restricted and focused to the town budget or the budget. Uh, and Christine, you said, and other articles approved by the selectmen?
No, no, just budgetary articles.
Just budgetary articles.
If you adopt the reduced quorum, you can only take up articles related to the operating budget.
That we have approved?
Yes.
So someone could not offer a budget article that we had not approved?
So effectively, that's, I I'm trying to think in practical terms, is that then the normal budget article that we have, the capital spending articles that we normally have, and the articles approving compensation and pay?
Enterprise fund too, right?
You'll have enterprise funds. We have an article to authorize the leasing of vehicles, so anything related to move those items within the capital, within the.
Revolving funds and all.
Anything related to that.
And each one of those, and and so I want to try to understand this. And if if the selectmen don't approve the article as it's constructed, then it doesn't get considered? What does it mean? What does it mean to require the selectmen to approve? I'm just trying to understand what.
I don't know. You need to see the legislation. I haven't seen it. I mean, it may even be, you can you can craft a warrant that only is is limited to those particular articles.
I I believe that's what the the discussion is. You would basically set the warrant to be only budgetary articles. That's the warrant we would move forward with.
But what I'm trying to understand is what you said about approval by select, so let me, let me get practical. We have a budget, I'm making this up. We have a, we have a budget that gets submitted uh, by the profligate warrant committee that has 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 a uh, a forty million dollar total budget, and with the selectmen feel we shouldn't spend more than thirty-five million, so we don't approve that forty million dollar budget. What does that mean?
So the the selectmen, it's the selectmen's budget in the in the warrants. You put forth the the operating budget.
So it'll be whatever we say we want it to be.
The selectmen are going to put forth the the budget, yeah.
I I think what it means, Gus, is that, I mean, what what gets voted on at town meeting would presumably still be the motion that's on the floor. But someone could not put an article on the warrant that's a budgetary article that we didn't allow on there. So budgetary to create a new department or to do something like that. If we haven't approved the article to go in the warrant, the motion will still be debated the way it's typically debated.
So we we get to approve which articles go in the warrant and and presumably how they're worded in the warrant. Those articles are then subject to whatever amendments for discussion might be brought up from the floor.
Correct.
And that discussion and that vote will be conducted by a radically, potentially radically reduced forum, quorum.
Correct. But reducing the quorum isn't limiting the number of people coming, it's just limiting the action.
Okay. I I mostly wanted to understand what approval by selectmen meant here, because it felt like we were in a potentially dictatorial position here that didn't sound right to me. So, okay.
Well, nothing for nothing, but my history in moderator as moderator in Medway has been we barely get over the hundred quorum, but we've had a working relationship among the selectmen uh, the school and the what's the the FinCom, so it's a consensus budget and and there's virtually no questions on it. It it just flies through.
Most of the time, that's how it works around here too, but not always. Okay.
If we had had a good dog leash article, we could put forth and tie to the budget, and we could make sure we had a huge quorum.
Well, that's my point, Christine. So the selectmen, there are certain budget articles that are the traditional ones that would be in on that warrant. Uh, any other articles having to do with spending that somebody might want would only be on the warrant if the selectmen approve it.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that's, that is what we are anticipating, but obviously, as Mark said, we're waiting for the final draft of the legislation, but that is how it has been presented to us and assumed to pass any day now.
So can we pick our date in June at this point then? Are we ready to do that?
Let me just suggest that, you you know, you could do during the day on like a Saturday too, like a Saturday morning.
I would, I would defer to the moderator's schedule.
Let me ask, before we do that, let me ask the question in opposite way. We've been publishing this as the fifteenth of June. If we're delaying it, it sounds like we're delaying it in hopes of finding out something that the legislature may authorize us to do that would entice us to push this, the town meeting off to September. Mike's made an argument that there really isn't a compelling argument for doing that. Therefore, my question is, why aren't we sticking with the published date that we have? It what what is, you know, to to your point, Pete, you had suggested the twenty-ninth. What is the advantage of changing the date yet again and delaying it two weeks? Why? Why are we doing that?
It would get us two more weeks of dealing with the the virus. That's about the only reason, I think.
Kick the warranty down the, down the road too.
And the state legislature as well.
It would give the warrant committee some more time on the budget. It would give us more time on the warrant hearing, and we'll have two more weeks of emergency legislation to see coming out of Washington and Boston, and we can see what, that what the rules will be then.
By the way, I I was under the impression that the state rainy day fund had a huge balance in it. Is that in play?
You'll have to ask Representative Garlic next week.
Not me. That's not my question. But somebody should ask it.
Well, do you think they'll be authorizing us to appropriate money out of the state rainy day fund? I don't think so.
Mike, past story, a question for you then. What you're, what I think maybe I just heard you say is if we could give the warrant committee two extra weeks by going to the twenty-ninth of June, that would be time that you could put to good use and do a better job of preparing the budget for that town meeting.
I can tell you that if we do not do that, our recommendation at the warrant hearing on the budget is to be, is going to be to be heard. So.
Then I, then I would go with Pete's suggestion of the twenty-ninth of June.
Scott, does that work for your schedule?
It does. It does, and I I think it also gives us more time to digest what we're we're going to hear from Representative Garlic next week. I I was reading in the paper today that Senator Spilker was at the NADIC Board of Selectmen meeting last night. And uh, it was described as frightening, and uh, they were making an assumption coming out of that meeting, the expected reduction was going to be twenty percent in state aid and in in NADIC, where they have a, you know, kind of a different uh, makeup, uh, they were expecting thirty percent in local receipts, uh, so um, the more time we have to be able to adjust to what we, what we're going to hear from Representative Garlic, seems like it makes sense to me.
And we will try to do it outside.
Yes. I think we should try to do it outside for sure. I like the idea of reducing the the quorum. I I think for the arguments that have been already offered by everybody, I think that makes the most sense. I think I like the idea of limiting it to the the articles then that would be required that have only budgetary implications. I think that makes sense as as well.
What about the suggestion of doing it on the Saturday, like Saturday, the twenty-seventh, to give yourself a rain date just in case?
To the twenty-ninth. I think that's it. I I I don't I've never tested the presumption of whether that, you know, at the end of, at the end of June, whether to do it on a Saturday makes sense. I did, I did say to Christine that that the, that the twenty-ninth is the week of July fourth. I mean, it ends with July fourth. I don't know if that matters, but I think there will be people in town perhaps that think of that for sure as a summer week in a normal year, but in this particular year, maybe people aren't thinking in that in that fashion at all, but in a normal year, if we had to push it off, I wouldn't push it off until that last week where the weekend ended with, uh, you know, the Fourth of July. That's clearly a vacation week in a, under. that last week where the weekend did with, uh, you know, the Fourth of July, that's clearly a vacation week in a, under normal scenarios. I don't know whether it's a vacation week this year for people. But uh, when I looked up the twenty ninth and I, it just became to me apparent that, uh, you know, it's the same week as, as the, as the Fourth of July. But, you know, I think the more time to Mike's point, I mean, I think there's a, you know, it favors having, based on everything we said, the, the, the most possible time we, we could possibly have, maybe we do it on the twenty seventh. I myself am balancing uh, some major foot surgery that has been scheduled for the last six or seven months on the eighteenth of June, so I think I was the one that was leaning towards trying to get it done on the fifteenth when we last considered this question, but that's, I don't even know, I can't even be in touch with my doctor and I don't know whether they're going to be doing any elective surgery uh, by then anyway. So I wouldn't make that a factor in this whole thing, so whatever, whether it's the twenty seventh or the twenty ninth, it sounds like every week matters. So maybe the twenty ninth is better than the twenty second, although I would expect that if we do the twenty ninth, that there will be some folks in town who, you know, who may feel that we're scheduling a town meeting encroaching in summer under usual, under, under the usual kind of circumstances. I don't know if anybody else has a thought of, about that, but by doing it so late in June.
I wouldn't worry about that part of it myself, given the circumstances that we're dealing with, but I, I, I do like Mike's suggestion of having it on Saturday, the twenty seventh. In case, in case we have a rain issue, because we probably have to kick it over then.
Yeah.
And we can spring for a school stool for you, Scott, or you can sit in the back of a fire truck or something.
I'll, I'll, we'll make it work, I'm not. We'll make it work. I would, I would point out that if we went to a quorum of ten percent of the two fifty twenty-five between the Board of Selectmen, Scott and the Warrant Committee, we would be well along to providing fifty percent of that quorum.
Yep, if we just got, if we just got the folks that are on this call tonight as participants and members of the panel, we'd be a long way there. So um, I don't think that's going to be a, I don't think that's going to be a problem, getting, getting a quorum at that number.
And even, even outside, we're going to have to plan for a town meeting that's socially distanced. So we're going to have to plan for having, you know, our usual numbers at town meeting, um, so we'll have to be ready for that.
Christine, you had said, um, not only budgetary articles, but also if, um, necessitated by legislation, I thought. Would that include the peg article as well?
The peg's a budgetary article because we have to, uh, we need to pass that in order to be able to appropriate the funding for that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a, Nick had mentioned the revolving funds, that would be part of a revolving fund.
My suggestion for a location would be the high school field, because you've got a, you've got lights and you've got a sound system already in place.
And you're going to also have to have some controls, frankly, people have to check in and all those types of things that have from a, you know, security for lack of a better term in terms of people being authorized to be at a town meeting and participate.
Yeah, and that does have limited access, the fences can be hopped, but there are some fences at least.
Just like the image of people hobbling the fences to get into town meeting, I'd like to just. Kind of feel like a, it's, it's a Rolling Stones concert or something.
I might have just found out how we can fix our revenue shortfall.
There we go. There we go. So what I'm hearing is that perhaps there would be a motion that would identify the Saturday, the twenty seventh as the, as the, as the date. Um, now, do we have to, do we have to take any action this week on, on doing that? Because we want to, we will be hearing from Representative Garlic next week. Mike Pastore, as long as you have the thirty, the thirty days, right, um, so. Or maybe we want to do that tonight. The, the issue, we can't do, we can't, we can't make the decision about the, the reduced quorum because that legislation is is pending approval, so that'll be a, it sounds like it'll be a next, uh, next week thing anyway.
Well, that's another reason to push it off further so that you have time to digest that legislation and, and implement it.
Yeah, we're going to need that.
I mean, I haven't even heard a discussion among the municipal attorneys and I'm on, on the website every day on, on the list serve. And nobody's even mentioned that that was pending and we've been, but I have people who have been very good about being on top of legislation. So this has been below radar as far as municipal attorneys go. And historically, uh, I mean, we had a lot of uh, interaction and vetting with the prior legislation, uh, and it wa- and I think it's a lot better legislation for our having had the input. We haven't even seen or heard of this, so we're relying at this point upon, you know, upon something we haven't even seen, let alone commented upon.
As a practical matter, Scott, if we choose not to uh, make a decision tonight, even though we're not making a decision, if a warrant hearing for the fifteenth of June would have to take place by the fifteenth of May. Um, if we, and I, and I'm, I'm okay with us not making the decision tonight, but I'm, I would make the observation by not making the decision tonight, we are definitely making a decision that I think, I would suggest we're definitely making a decision, we're not going to try to hold this meeting on the fifteenth of June.
Correct.
We may not know what date, we are going to hold it on, but it's probably not going to be the fifteenth of June.
Well, as long as you take action and continue it before you get to that fifteenth, you know, I, I don't believe you have a problem. I mean, obviously.
What I think you're talking about is we would need to have to have, we would need to have the warrant hearing next Thursday or Friday.
Right, right.
If we're not going to, if we're going to wait till Tuesday to make a decision, that's not enough time to say we're having a public hearing on Thursday.
Right. Yep. So the strong presumption would be uh, that, that we would be holding it on the twenty seventh of of June on that Saturday, uh, with a rain date for Monday, the twenty ninth. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't, that, that that assumption wouldn't hold. You know, pending, no matter what we hear, either the legislation or any report from Representative Garlic.
And, and just, just one minor point, Scott, if we stuck with the twenty ninth, you could still have a rain date on the thirtieth, right? I'm not arguing for that, I'm just pointing out that that is.
Yeah, we'd have to probably just. The, the moderator has the authority to, to move it around within that timeframe.
I, I'm certainly happy taking a week to think about this, to see if we can think of anything that we haven't thought of yet. I, I think we are effectively deciding it won't be the fifteenth. We just haven't officially decided it's the twenty seventh or the twenty ninth or the twenty second or whatever.
Agreed.
I'm okay with it.
All right.
We'll hold till next Tuesday on an actual vote pending the legislation.
Yes, but we have a general consensus, it seems, so.
And I just wanted to recognize there was a, in, in the question and answer, uh, Chris McQ Potts did have language add in recognition of Medfield High School seniors, we deserve a lot of recognition. Uh, we certainly wouldn't have a problem getting a quorum under any circumstance, so appreciate that comment. Stephen Resch has also chimed in, if we are going to do an annual town meet, meeting in a field, better do it before triple E hits, so I think we need to, might be another reason to do it on that Saturday and do it during the, the daylight hours. Yep. And the locusts.
And the angry bees that are coming.
Yeah.
Murder, murder hornets.
West Coast only at the moment.
Yeah, okay, well. Thanks, everybody, for your ongoing consideration of the, you know, of the town meeting, of the annual town meeting. Whoever would have thought that when we decided that we would move it from the last Monday in April, that we would be dealing with all of this, uh, this uncertainty, nobody, so thanks, everyone, I'm going to bow out here and let you guys continue with your meeting.
So Chris, what is our next item here? We've got a discussion, potential of COVID nineteen operations actions.
Yes, let me just promote the police chief, um, she's going to have a discussion regarding the Medfield State Hospital.
Okay. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
There you go.
All right, so I apologize, I've had a little bit of technical difficulty on my end. Uh, getting into the Zoom meeting, but hopefully we've rectified that problem. Uh, so a couple of quick things, I wanted to update the Board of Selectmen on uh, some of the happenings uh, in town, so I'm pleased to say that the police department has focused a tremendous amount of our energy on um, ensuring that the town doesn't become victim to some of the felonious crimes that are occurring in other communities such as burglaries on our closed businesses and uh, break-ins, domestic violence, suicides and overdoses. Thus far, I am pleased to report that we have had no burglaries or break-ins since the shutdown has occurred. And that is a direct correlation to the increased patrolling that we have done to try and ensure that our businesses are safeguarded from these types of offenses, so that's a real positive. Um, as you know, I have been a strong advocate for keeping our state hospital open to the public. I think that as prolonged as the circumstance has been for everyone and the uncertainty facing our community, that it's paramount for our residents to have a viable place to go out and exercise and have some mental reprieve from the stress of this pandemic. That has been strained greatly on the fact that the trustees have chosen to close the majority of the trails and accessible areas within town. While they've opened some up, uh, some of the more notable um, locations for people to get out and exercise, such as Rocky Woods, uh, remains closed. We, in an effort to ensure pedestrian and vehicular safety, asked DPW to put up some no parking signs on Hartford Street so that we could ensure that the traveling public could do so safely. Uh, so as anticipated, the state hospital this weekend with the warm weather saw a dramatic increase in uh, visitation. That being said, um, I do think that we have people on both sides of the spectrum where there are some people who are extremely fearful of COVID and uh, reluctant to go outdoors. Um, being very cautious about having social gatherings and we have some of the public who are beginning to experience some restlessness, wanting to experience uh, or engage in some social interaction. And the state hospital provides that avenue for them to do so. So one of the things we did see over the weekend was a, a dramatic increase in our youth population embracing this opportunity to have some social distancing and interaction. Uh, I know that um, there are people on both sides of the fence of this, but I feel that after viewing both um, my own personal observations as well as photographs that have been presented to me, that we are still safely engaging in the protocols established by the governor. Um, we do recognize that there is going to be a dramatic increase as the weather warms up and becomes more palatable, uh, that people will be utilizing the state hospital and I do encourage that. In, in effort to maintain some social distancing protocols, I have increased our patrols to hourly patrols within the state hospital. Which will be recorded in our dispatch and dispersals. This evening, we had a complaint of some juveniles engaging in a sports activity over at the high school. Um, and our, our officers immediately responded, maintained social, social distancing protocols by utilizing their PA system and dispersed the crowd. So I think that this, um, while challenging for everyone involved is still effective. Uh, so I think that we are taking the necessary steps to safeguard the public as a whole while recognizing individual preferences to go out and um, you know, do the types of physical and emotional um, exercises that they can. So once again, I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to keep the state hospital open to the public. Allow our police department to effectively patrol and encourage people to maintain social distancing. But recognize that as we near the end of the, what would be school year, I, I can't say this more emphatically. The youth in Medfield have demonstrated a, a true sense of maturity. And they have continued to abide by the rules of the governor while still trying to enjoy their senior year and I would be reluctant to remove this opportunity for them to go out and be socially active in a responsible way. Uh, so, you know, while there have been some, some occurrences of some nuisance crimes that have occurred at the state hospital, I think that on the whole, the community is truly embracing the governor's order. And uh, a- again, I would strongly encourage you to keep the state hospital open and allow us to to mitigate any of the offenses that are occurring there.
Gus, Mike?
From, from my standpoint, that's good advice. The, the, we, we, we've asked peoples across the board, not even just youth, but people across the board. Because actually, uh, to the chief's point, there are a lot of students that are there, but there's also a lot of adults that are there and and beyond that, just driving around town, you, it's, it's actually pretty remarkable at the number of people that are out doing various things, it's, it's a bit heartwarming at times to see parents out with their little children on the streets. Probably doing a little bit more of organized, you know, bike riding together and things like that than maybe would have been the case when this, i- i- if there's a silver lining in all this, it's that some of these things that parents are doing now with their kids, it's probably more important than, than maybe we even think about it when everything's normal. I would echo the chief's view that the, the vast majority of students that I've seen, as I already said, um, they're more mature than I ever would have been when I was their age. Uh, I'm, I'm acutely aware that as we go into the summertime, I, I don't know how this is going to work. We, we've gone through the, the surge, we've gone to the peak and all through that, we were asking for people's cooperation and then after we get to the point where we're at least flattening out, uh, this is, I am criticizing the governor, although I, I'm not criticizing the whole, his whole approach. But at the very end of this, we turn around and we act like we don't trust the people that we've asked for cooperation from all the way through this, who have delivered that cooperation, all of a sudden at the end, we want to come in with coercion. Uh, in the case of the state hospital, uh, I'm, I'm really pretty frustrated with the trustees. Uh, I'm frustrated with some of our neighboring towns because we know that we have people from those neighboring towns who are grateful to us for leaving open spaces open for them because their own town shut them off from it. And, and this is an important aspect of helping people get through this, as I see it. Uh, as we go into the summer months, as we go into better weather, the pressure of what people want to do to get outside, get fresh air, get exercise and do things will get greater. Uh, I think a response on our part of trying to cap that pressure and control that pressure is the exact wrong thing to do.
So I, I agree substantively, uh, with Gus that I don't think we should close it, I think we obviously have to, to do our best to remind people uh, to continue to cooperate, but I think just as people stopped going places before they were told they couldn't go places because of their concerns, I think as people get less concerned, people are going to start going places again. Um, you know, regardless of what the, the overall instruction is, and I think to, to Gus's point that if, you know, if we can relieve some of the pressure, so you don't have anything reaching a breaking point, you're not sort of. so you don't have anything reaching a breaking point, you're not sort of clamping down so much that it turns into kind of a, you know, a tea kettle that's got the spigot capped off or, you know, some other potentially explosive situation, and trust people to be reasonable. I think that's the way to go. And I think for the most part, I mean, my observations running around, walking around is that people are wearing masks where they should be, people are avoiding each other where they should be. And obviously, we had, you know, we had an uptick at the state hospital this weekend, but I think the measures that the chief has described make sense to me. And hopefully, people will continue to cooperate and as time goes on, will really have a better understanding of what the real risk areas are and where the real higher risk of transmission is. We'll be able to adjust those kinds of restrictions accordingly. And I suspect that places like the hospital are not going to be seen as real danger zones. And even states that had very draconian closings of state parks, New Jersey, for example, all their state parks were closed, they actually reopened the state parks within the last week. I think they reached the conclusion that the closure didn't really, didn't help them that much and was probably counterproductive. And so the chief's approach sounds right to me.
So I agree as well. I live next door to the state hospital, and so I end up being there probably three, four times a week easily. And I would have a different, slightly different interpretation. I've seen plenty of large crowds up there in the past month or so. And I've seen plenty of people that are not socially distancing like the governor has asked us to do. There are plenty of people that are closer than six feet and their kids just being kids. But I think, and we all got the email from John Thompson saying that he's, and he's there all the time now, almost all the time. Every time I go, he's there. And he commented on the amount of people that were not paying attention to the social distancing. I think it is a little bit of a problem, and I wish people would just take a lesson that we're not through this yet and that we really need to be paying attention to the medical virus condition that we're doing this to prevent spreading through our community. But I think that it makes sense to leave the hospital open, certainly.
You know, Pete, to that end, I agree with you. We certainly see some things that are concerning to us, but we try and balance that with the potential backlash that could come from strict enforcement. I think that we have a community that is unique in the fact that it's a highly educated community and people are very cognizant of the fact that they need to be socially responsible. And I think we should embrace that from a law enforcement perspective. I do not want to see our Police Department or the town of Medfield in a circumstance where we are so enforcement-driven that we alienate our community and we don't allow them to make the personal decisions for the safety of themselves and their family. So, you know, we have taken a soft shoe approach in terms of the Police Department has put forward a PSA promoting sanitation, hand washing and social distancing. We continue to distribute T-shirts to youth and teenagers that we see engaging in appropriate social distancing. So we have taken a very positive approach to enable people to embrace the rules that will keep them safe. I don't want to see us on the headlines as, you know, enforcing these rules to the point that we find ourselves arresting a father for playing baseball with his son out in the field. I just don't think that's the route we need to go. And, you know, the future is unpredictable and we don't know what's going to happen. And certainly, if things become out of control, we will take a more significant, dramatic law enforcement-driven role in this. But right now, I think the best position for us to be in is one that promotes social distancing and promotes the use of masks, but also promotes a healthy lifestyle and emotional well-being. Because these are trying times, they're trying times for our community, they're trying times for us, for myself. I'll speak frankly, I have children and I fear for them as well. So I'm doing the best I can to safeguard them and much to Selectman Markucci's point and as well Selectman Murby's point is that the more we put pressure on our families to comply with the governor's orders, I think we may see some buck back or pushback on this. So I'd like to see us continue in this role of encouraging the community to do the right thing and showing our presence in a very visible way. We had a great response today when we got a call out to the high school for some juveniles who were engaging in sports activity. Our officer went out, he used his PA system so that he could maintain his social distancing as well, explain the situation, encourage them to disperse, and within five minutes, those juveniles dispersed. So I think we have a community that is really willing to accept our encouragement. So I would, I would say that that's a path that's working for us well. And let's continue with that path and maybe hold back or resist using strong enforcement efforts at this point.
It's a totally personal responsibility issue. It can't be solved through any sort of enforcement from the police, it's just not going to happen. And it would be counterproductive for us to try. But hopefully, our residents will recognize things that are inappropriate and try to have their behavior conform with what we've been asked to do.
You know, the one thing I wondered about, I do think, especially as the weather gets better on the really attractive days for people to go out, obviously adjusting the level of police presence, I think just simply seeing, people seeing police, even if you don't have to get into an exchange, that sends a subtle breaking message that people that might, if they think they're alone on their own, they might try things that if they assume that sooner or later someone's going to come by and see it, they may not try some of the things they would otherwise try. But I've also been wondering, you know, Pete, when I go by, I'm kind of, I look at the circles of SUVs and pickup trucks south of Hospital Road, generally parked about 10 feet apart. And so generally with kids that basically under these circumstances have found the most constructive way they can think of to deal with this in a way that's compliant, that lets them still be who they are and lets them still have the relationships they have. And it kind of hits at me that they're that mature and that willing to cooperate, but that determined to still have the relationships and the experiences that kids that age ought to have. Occasionally, there's a few violations I've seen where two kids are both sitting in the back of the same SUV and everybody else is six, 10 feet away. I started wondering whether we might not even be able to make some progress just by putting a few signs up in particularly sensitive areas that say, look, you know, we're doing all we can to keep the hospital, if that's the hospital, we're doing all we can to keep this hospital open, but we also want to make sure you're all safe and healthy. You know, we're asking you, please, observe the social distancing rules. We're doing our best to let you do the things that you want to be able to out here, get into the sunlight and the fresh air, but we're asking you to please cooperate with us around social distancing. And in those places where the areas are used frequently and there are a fair number of people, I'm wondering whether just those signs wouldn't have a beneficial, you know, wouldn't require somebody to talk to you all the time, you'd just see the sign and people would start paying attention.
I don't know, I think it's just going to depend on personal responsibility. People just have to do what they think is right. And clearly, people have different sort of standards. I mean, I can tell you that, I think it was Saturday night that I was walking up at the hospital and I saw a group of about eight kids walking down towards the, from the overlock down into the woods. And they were certainly, you know, two, three feet apart from each other. You know, that's not what the governor has asked us to do, but, you know, so there is some stuff going on that is sort of non-compliant, but.
You know, Sue.
Standards.
To that end, Pete, and this is one of the cautions I spoke about two months ago, was that the state hospital right now presents a really unique opportunity for our residents and admittedly, some residents from additional or neighboring towns to come in and utilize this as a safe space. If we were to close the state hospital, I think we would see more of that where we have our youth in particular. Listen, we've all been teenagers at some point, so I think we understand and embrace kind of the rebellious nature of being a teenager, that we're not going to stop their behavior, but we may displace it. So right now, we have the ability to ensure that our teenagers in our community are using a facility in the safest way possible. And perhaps that is not to the letter of the governor's order, and we would certainly encourage people to follow the governor's order. But I think that if we were to close the state hospital at this point, we would see some displacement and particularly with our youth where they start to walk into the woods. And that's much more troubling from a law enforcement perspective on how we monitor that and how we observe it and whether we can control it. So, you know, I think from a purely law enforcement perspective, where we can observe behaviors and encourage compliance is a much better avenue for us to impart on than it would be for us to displace our youth and send them into areas that are less visible where some perhaps more deviant behaviors can occur. The last thing I want to see come from a situation like this is that our youth get pushed into wooded or secluded areas where they may engage in more reckless behaviors such as alcohol intake. And then we have to be concerned about them driving intoxicated or making poor decisions. So I think that this situation is extremely unique and beyond anything any of us could have anticipated. But I would much rather be dealing with two teenagers who are three feet apart as opposed to six feet apart than I would from two teenagers going into the woods and drinking and then getting in their cars and driving. So that's a personal and law enforcement perspective on that for you to consider.
Yep, well, thank you very much, Chief. Anything further on the Medfield State Hospital topic?
That was it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
19 operations, actions?
Just a couple of things. The Memorial Day Committee wanted me to let you know that because of COVID-19, they've had to cancel the Memorial Day Parade. I know, they are working on alternative ceremony. And right now, they're planning on having all of the churches ring their bells simultaneously as a moment of remembrance. So I'll update you as to exactly what time that will take place. They were still working out the details, but the committee had come up with that as the best solution for finding an alternative for that day. So I'll keep you posted on that. We have a department head meeting tomorrow, we're going to formalize our reopening committee. And as we were just discussing with Medfield State Hospital, the governor's order for masks when you can't socially distance takes effect tomorrow. So just as a reminder for those not wearing them, but I will tell you, every single person who came to the election yesterday, all 104, everybody had masks on. In fact, there was one woman who came into the building who didn't. We told her it was okay, she could still commit to vote, and she refused, went out to get her mask. So I think our residents are being very responsible. That's all I had under updates for COVID.
There are no action items. Anything on the budget that we should be talking about at this point?
No, I think we're going to hold until we hear from Representative Garlic next week. And Senator Feeney is going to provide, as well as Representative, they're going to provide their updates over the next few days. They have PowerPoints they want to share with you and make a presentation next week. So Representative Julie as well. The only other update I had under time administrator was just an incredible thank you to all of our voters in Medfield for taking the effort to do the absentee ballots like we asked, those people who were willing to come to the polls yesterday. And to thank Marion Binaldi, Tracy Clank and Jim Mullin, our interim town clerk, for just an incredible day. There was, you know, very smooth, I'm very proud of all of the work that they did.
Excellent, good. Let's see, Selectmen reports, anything? Gus?
I don't have anything new other than to echo Christine's gratitude to the poll workers who obviously did a great job of counting the votes and getting the results out quickly. There, we do have a development, State Hospital Development Committee meeting tomorrow night, so we're continuing on. So I probably have more to say about that next week. And outside of that, I don't think I have anything.
Mike, anything?
Just another thanks to all the people who worked the polls yesterday and made the whole thing work out. I know Marion was very busy last week mailing out absentee ballots and all the rest. And it was, it was great to get that done and glad we got through it. And congratulations to Gus and to everybody else who was elected or reelected yesterday. The Affordable Housing Trust is going to meet on Thursday. The main topic is our ongoing discussion of a potential RFP around trying to develop a group home in town. And so we're going to be meeting with and talking to a consultant who specializes in the development of group homes for adults with developmental disabilities to talk about what our options are so we can keep moving forward on that front. And I think there's no updates from the other various committees that I'm on.
So I would again congratulate you, Gus, on getting reelected. I actually was not organized enough to do an absentee, so I actually had to go to the polls and you weren't there standing, so I almost didn't vote for you. Couldn't hold that against you, I guess.
If I had known, it would have made a difference, because I would have been there.
Well, the school committee people were there. And Anna May were there.
Paid off, they did better than I did.
And actually, Jess, if you're watching, you still have a sign down there that you might want to collect. The Metro Coalition on Suicide Prevention actually has had two meetings in the past week because May is Mental Health Awareness Month. There should be green hearts appearing around town. If you're up at the state hospital, I understand there's chalk up there that you can make your own hearts with. And so, and they're planning Music Mondays with Medfield TV. And there were all kinds of programs that were planned that had to be dumped because of the virus and the social distancing issues. The townwide master planning committee is going to be meeting next week and has done an about face and has decided to go ahead withholding the public forum after all, as I think I reported to you last week. So we'll be planning that public forum next week. Anything else that we should be doing tonight?
I have nothing else this evening.
I think we need a motion to adjourn then.
All right, I have to make the motions now. I did want to say goodnight to my children who are downstairs watching this meeting on YouTube in the computer room, because there's no Red Sox game to watch tonight. So I'll see you shortly, guys. I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci?
I.
I'm so looking forward to this year of rest.
It's the best year, it's the best spot. Goodnight.
Bye, everyone.